We're back in session. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening are some presentations. And, Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, Council, and ladies and gentlemen in the audience. I'd like to ask Roberta Cotman to come to the podium. This evening, I'm presenting a proclamation on Women's Equality Day, which, due to our meeting schedule, we did not present earlier in the month. It was last Friday, August 26th. And I would like to read the proclamation to you. Whereas, in 1971, the U.S. Congress designated August 26th as Women's Equality Day to commemorate the 1920 certification of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution granting women the right to vote. And whereas, generated because of lower wages, poor working conditions, and limited opportunities for women in the workplace, the women's rights movement united women across the United States in a peaceful campaign to fight for equal rights and privileges where, which were rather available to only male citizens. And whereas, because millions of women who planned, organized, marched, petitioned, and lobbied every field of business and labor changed the world for generations of women to receive better working conditions, fair wages, and equal rights. And whereas, one of the most notable leaders of the women's suffrage movement, Susan B. Anthony, co-founded the New York Women's State Temperance Society after she was prevented from speaking at a conference because she was female. Many years later, Ms. Anthony would become the first woman to appear on the, on a U.S. coin, the 1979 U.S. dollar. And whereas, the month of August is an annual declared month to highlight the contributions of women, women's events and history in modern-day society. Women such as Kate Mulaney organized the first all-male labor union, Maggie Lena Walker, the first African-American woman in the U.S. to charter a bank, and Norma Yeager, first woman stockbroker, to be permitted on the floor of the New York Stock Exchange, as well as many others. And whereas, in commemoration of the passage of the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution granting women the right to vote, we recognize and commend the women who led this peaceful campaign grading, granting women the right to vote. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Kenson Seiver, Mayor of the City of Southfield County, Volklund State of Michigan, do hereby proclaim August 26th, 2017, as Women's Equality Day in the City of Southfield. Encourage the residents and businesses of Southfield to reflect and celebrate the diverse and historic accomplishments of women to the equality, the quality of life in our community. To Ms. Cotman, I present this, and again, we were thinking of you on Friday.
Thank you very much. And I'm very glad and to remember. And this is just a prelude to the women and the right to vote. And so, I present tonight, first of all, the symbolic representation of the United States of America to women. The currency. I present the Susan B. Anthony coin. And the march and the suffrage. The $1 coin. And the other coin designated to women, E. Pluribus Unum, In God We Trust, is the Dollar Coin of S. K. O. Weah. And if you don't know who she is, she led the Lewis-Clark expedition through North America. And not only that, but she finished that expedition with a papoose on her back. And the tribute to African-American women and the African diaspora will be the $20 bill. On the face of the $20 bill will be the face of Harriet Tubman. But led the Underground Railroad. We are women. Hear us roar.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cotman. And to Kamisha Gant.
I would also like to, I neglected when I started the meeting, to apologize for the lightness of us getting started. Our prior, our first half of our meeting ran on a little longer than we anticipated. The next presentation is an overview of Southfield Corporate Community Cup Challenge and presentation. Ms. Freeman?
Good evening, Mr. President, Honorable Board, Honorable Mayor. On behalf of the City of Southfield, it was a true pleasure to work with Terry Fields and our Parks and Recreation Department, and of course, Chris Riley, to work with many of our outstanding companies in the City of Southfield to put on our first Community Cup Challenge. A couple of our committee members are here, and I'd like them to come forward, if possible, the wonderful ladies from HAP and Chris Riley, come on up. And I'm not sure if Cindy Carr is here. From Mars Advertising. But in the last winter, a group of companies came together to talk about, you know, different community projects that the companies do for the City of Southfield, and they do a lot of outstanding work donating their time and energy to get involved and to help the city and Parks and Recreation. And out of that came us, out of a simple discussion came the thought that we should start this Community Cup Challenge to bring the business community together. And so, just wanted to share a quick overview. And I, again, want to thank the committee so much. Laura and Tamara and Cindy and all the people at Mars and HAP, they came up with this beautiful logo that we hope to use in future events, but the Southfield Community Cup. And so, we're really impressed by, by that work, and we appreciate it. But the events kicked off with our first Eat to the Beat in June, and then we had six weeks of activities. And I have, there were 16 teams involved. Aria, the City of Southfield, Kamau, Credit Acceptance Corporation, Eaton, HAP, Hello World, IHS Market, Lawrence Tech, Moncor, MSX International, Redico, Robert Half, Sandler and Travis Trade Advisory Services, the Mars Agency, and Vibe Credit Union. So, we had a really wonderful cross-section of businesses, and this competition really gave people a great chance to interact. At our first kickoff, we had over 250 people coming out to watch the event and 50 people participating along with volunteers. And again, it kicked off at our Eat to the Beat. The next week was our Quiz Bowl, and it was sponsored by Vibe Credit Union, and the HAP ladies really helped us pull this event off, too, so we appreciate them, at Nomad's Grill. Then we had a golf scramble, and we truly appreciate all of the work from Beechwoods and Terry and everyone at the golf course and Parks and Rec with this event. Then we had an outstanding kickball tournament, which has led to a young professionals' kickball tournament taking place with the Chamber. Then, you'll all, if any of you had a chance to come into our pavilion, the closing ceremony was on July 13th, and it was called Canstruction. And many of us contributed canned goods and money to help support gleaners, and it was just a phenomenal event. And here's just some really cool pictures of the activities that took place. And our dear friends at HAP, I don't know, we kind of think the fix was in, but not sure. Anyway, they worked really hard, and they ended up winning the entire event. We're very proud of them. I'll let them share a couple of moments. But gleaners did a phenomenal job. They were able to support 31,158 meals because of the donations that we collected and the money that we collected. And I believe that Mayor is here? From Congresswoman Brenda Lawrence's office? I don't see her. She had a certificate for you as well to thank you for all of your hard work in organizing that event. But it was just really an outstanding event, and everyone had a really great time. And we were hoping, Mr. Mayor, that you could present the trophy to, to HAP, even though we want, we're coming back next year strong.
It'll be eight years to hear, so maybe you're...
Next year, you have a chance?
Yeah.
Again, this was really outstanding way to bring all the businesses together. We're looking forward to next year's event. We already started planning, and we truly appreciate all the support that the city has given us with this activity. So, thank you.
Thank you. I was one of the judges on the Canstruction, and I'll tell you, the winners did a marvelous job. I mean, I mean, it was just, well, hands down. Thank you. The next presentation is the Southfield Fire Department Open House. Is there someone? Ah, the chief is hiding in the back.
Good evening, Mr. President, Council, Mr. Mayor, citizens, and visitors of Southfield. I'm chief, I'm Fire Chief Johnny Menifee, and I want to formally invite the Southfield community out to this year's fire open house. This year marks our 75th anniversary of delivering tireless service to our community, and we want to give back and have a, a fun event with, with everyone in the community. We believe that there's something for everyone at this event. We'll have health screenings, free education, we have bouncy houses, face painting for the kids, they can participate and, and work a real fire hose, fire demonstrations, extrication, rapid intervention. So, I believe it's going to be a fun event for everyone. This is going to be September 10th, from 11:00 to 4:00. You are allowed to park at Southfield A&amp;T. The main fire headquarters address is 24477 Losser. Like I said, we're just south of the high school. We would love for the community to come out and, and share this event right on the eve of 9/11 for us. It's, it's a fun time, a free event, something for everybody, and we hope to see you there.
The Fire Department does a wonderful job, and I'm a, I can attest to that. But this is on September the 10th, from 11:00 to 4:00, and September the 11th, or 9/11, showed how United States can pull together as a team. And coincidentally, we have the Southfield Community Pride Award on the following day, Monday, September the 11th. So, this all fits in together to show how Southfield really is a team. So, come out Sunday, then come out Monday. Thank you. We have some appointments this evening. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, once again. I'd like to call up Bill or William Burlingame from Eaton Corporation, and Kimberly Peterson from Transwestern. Council, you will recall that you approved the expansion of the City Center District, and with that expansion, we asked, and you approved, the expansion of the City Center Advisory Board by two members. So, this evening, I'm presenting one of the new members, which, of the additional two, which is Bill Burlingame of Eaton. Bill serves as the Facility Manager at the corporation down the street on Civic Center Drive. And then Kimberly Peterson is replacing Kim Heslop, who is no longer with Transwestern. Ms. Peterson is a 20-year employee of Transwestern. These are the managers of the Town Center Complex, very vital to our City Center operations. And she serves as Senior Vice President and General Manager. So, I'm recommending both of these folks to the City Center Advisory Board, and I'd ask your approval this evening.
Do I do have a motion?
Support.
No, I do, I need a motion.
As Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve these appointments.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve the appointments to the City Center Advisory Board as presented by the mayor. Is there any discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried.
I, before you do the swearing-in, if I could introduce the other, other person, and then we'd swear the, the group in. Also, it'll take effect of, in September, I'd like to ask Michael McFarland to come forward, if he's in the audience. Mr. McFarland, I'm tapping to serve on the Downtown Development Board. His appointment would actually take place in September. He's replacing someone whose term expires. But I bring him before you tonight so that he's up and ready to go. Mr. McFarland has lived in the city a number of years, and he lives in the district in Providence Towers. And I'm very glad to welcome him. He's had great interest in our DDA and the, the Citizens Group that has served for years. So, I would also like a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. McFarland to the DDA, and then I'd ask the clerk to do the oath.
Swearing in?
So moved. Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Morris, that we appoint to the Downtown Development Authority, Mr. Michael McFarland. Is there any discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Madam Clerk?
If you'd raise your right hand, please. Do you hereby swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this state, and the Southfield City Charter, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of City, City Center Advisory Board, and the Downtown Development of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of your ability?
Okay. One more line? Yes. Congratulations. I'm not filling in, okay? You're welcome. And you have to come forward?
Yes.
Right on this line, please. And I'll fill everything else in. Congratulations. You're welcome. Right on this line, please. And I'll fill everything else in. Congratulations. You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome aboard. I'd like your time.
You may have it.
I'm afraid somebody will hang me with it.
Congratulations. Thank you.
You're doing a great job. We need you.
How do things have to get squared away?
Congratulations.
Yes.
Congratulations.
We have two sets of minutes to approve.
I'll swing with Mr. Chairman. They both, they committed the whole of July 10th and regular meeting of July 24th.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Fercassi, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we approve the minutes of Committee of the Whole of July the 10th and the minutes of the regular meeting of July the 24th. Is there any discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Madam Clerk?
If you'd raise your right hand, please. Do you hereby swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this state, and the Southfield City Charter, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of City, City Center Advisory Board, and the Downtown Development of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of your ability?
Okay. One more line? Yes. Congratulations. I'm not filling in, okay? You're welcome. And you have to come forward?
Yes.
One more line, please. And I'll fill everything else in. Congratulations. You're welcome. Right on this line, please. And I'll fill everything else in. Congratulations. You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome aboard.
I'd like your time.
You may have it.
I'm afraid somebody will hang me with it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job.
We need you.
How do things have to get squared away?
Congratulations.
Yes.
Congratulations.
We have two sets of minutes to approve.
I'll swing with Mr. Chairman. They both, they committed the whole of July 10th and regular meeting of July 24th.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Fercassi, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we approve the minutes of Committee of the Whole of July the 10th and the minutes of the regular meeting of July the 24th. Is there any discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. We have a number of items on a consent agenda. Is there anyone that has anything that they want to discuss?
Mr. President, I'd like to discuss item G.
Okay. We will skip over that one, come back, come back to that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Fercassi?
H.
H? Okay, we'll skip over that one, come back to that one. Okay. Item A is the Economic Development Initiative, and the staff is seeking authorization to conduct two public hearings on Monday, September the 25th, 2017, to establish an industrial development district under Public Act 198 of 1974 as amended. Item B is the Northland easements. We had a discussion earlier this evening, and there were around 850 easements that were clogging up the works at Northland. We've got them, we hired Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark to sort through them. They're down to about 30, and we need to have an expert that understands the easement process. We are asking for the approval to hire the services of Kick'em Hanley Law Firm to work out the final resolution of those last easements. Item C is authorization to contract for detention facilities operations. The Police Department has a detention center over at the police station, and they have used G4S in the past years. They put it out for bids. G4S was the winning bid that provides corrections officers that have successfully completed the American Correctional Association Training Program and certification process. And it's, the contract will be for a one-year period effective September 1st, 2017, through August 31st, 2018, with an option to extend for up to two one-year periods. Expenditures for this are not to exceed $900,100. Consent agenda item D is to rescind the traffic control order P-38-69. In September 2nd, 1969, there were some no parking signs put up in the Greenspruce Lane, Pierce Street, Glasgow Street area, and we did pass another traffic control order that superseded these, so we want to rescind the traffic control order number P-38-69. Consent agenda item E is receipt of bids on water main installation and repair parts for the Water and Sewer Department, and the council, they want the council to approve the purchase of water main parts from HD Supply Water Works of Canton Township, Michigan, for the period of August 29th, 2017, through August 28th, 2018. The expenditures will not exceed $144,970.66. Item number F is authorization, or to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the MEDC grant agreement for the Red Pole Park. We will soon be putting another piece of, of public art up. It's called the Red Pole Park. The deal was that we had to raise $50,000 in order to qualify for the MEDC's $50,000 grant. We raised $55,145, and so, we're eligible for the grant, and when the grant comes in, we need the, the mayor and the city clerk to be able to sign for that. So, we need their approval. G, we're going to skip for a second. H, we're going to skip for a second. I is the Southfield Police Department, United States Department of Justice, 2017, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant, and we've had these in the past. It's the, it's a grant that comes from the federal government. It's the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, and it will be worth $17,372 if we're awarded it again, but the Police Department needs authorization to apply for that grant. Item J is a settlement of litigation. We went into closed session earlier to talk about settlement of a lawsuit against the city for, for Northland, for the water bill, and we've agreed on a price of $65,000 to settle that, and we're asking the council to approve that settlement. The last is Southfield Smart Zone Business Accelerator Grant application, and it's asking the Southfield to adopt a resolution authorized in the City Administration Authority to sign all co-applicant materials associated with the proposed business accelerator with Lawrence Technological University, and there's several other official documents that the city administrator is being asked to sign. With that, I'd ask for a motion to approve items A, B, C, D, E, F, I, J, and K. Uh, with that, I'd ask for a motion to approve items A, B, C, D, E, F, I, J and K.
I'll still move, Mr. Chairman.
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Ficassi, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approve the consent agenda items as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Item G, uh, was pulled for discussion. Uh, Mr. Cruz?
Yep, so, um, I just wanted to have a, I guess, kind of voice somewhat of a concern about this piece. So, and item G deals with a, a donation of artwork that, uh, came to the mayor and he brought it to us, uh, from, uh, Douglas Ratcliffe North and what is, um, and it's in the form of a, a statue of a Wolverine and it's a, a tribute, if you will, I guess, to, uh, former President Gerald Ford. And, uh, so it's a, it's a statue of Wolverine with a, um, that's mounted and then it has a plaque that sits under it that says, "In memory of Gerald Ford, uh, proud Michigander from the great Wolverine State," and then it goes on the list, a number of, um, Mr. Forrest, President Forrest's accomplishments. And, and my only kind of hesitation about this, and I, and I have this about naming any kind of sculpture or figure, uh, about, you know, for someone, especially this because, I mean, everybody might not be in, have been in favor of Gerald Ford, may not think he was a great president or didn't like him for whatever reasons. I mean, it's a partisan, being president is a partisan position, so, I mean, does it look like the city has a side in this one way or the other politically, um, as opposed to somebody that might be nonpartisan? And, and are we setting ourselves up for potentially a slippery slope of other, uh, statues or memorials to other types of other presidents or other elected officials that, you know, people might like or want to see? Um, and, and you know what, I mean, even though he was the only president to come from Michigan, um, the connection to Southfield in my mind really kind of is not there. So, uh, it'd be different, maybe there was some kind of additional connection back to the city. So, uh, I just wanted us to consider that as we were thinking about bringing this in and the more so concern, I think, just about, um, you know, opening up, um, a desire for, you know, maybe, you know, that it might be a request or a donation from somebody else that wants to put a statue of Barack Obama in Southfield because he's first black president and we're majority African-American city, okay? So, you, people can make cases for why to have certain things in certain places all the time. And so, I just want to make sure that we feel comfortable, uh, with putting something up like this in the city of Southfield and that our residents would be comfortable with it as well. So, uh, that's kind of just what I wanted to add. I know, I had expressed this to the mayor earlier in the week a little bit more and I, if you'd like, I'd like you to, and you did give me some feedback on that if you want to share that as well as part of this consideration.
Uh, this donation, um, is not political per se. It just gives a biography of Gerald R. Ford and, um, um, I do not know.
Do you make a phone in?
My, my is on, yeah. Uh, I do not know, um, um, Mr. North, uh, but he contacted me. He had heard that, um, uh, about our interest in public art in the city of Southfield and I did take this first to the Public Art Commission. Um, they recommended its acceptance, um, and asked me to forward it on to the council, uh, which I'm doing this evening.
Okay.
And I, I would recommend accepting it, a placement on the, uh, outdoor pavilion. Um, it's coming to us at no cost to the city.
Uh, we discussed this earlier and it will be located on the pavilion around, uh, between the police and the, and the.
The outdoor plaza, right?
Yes, yeah, the outdoor plaza. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the art donation.
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we accept the art donation by Douglas Ratcliffe North. Is there any further discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
Opposed.
Uh, let the record show that it passed with two, uh, no votes. Uh, Mr., uh, uh, Ficassi, you pulled, uh, H?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, it had to do with, not with the art or the suggestion that, that this be a recommendation of the arts council, but, um, um, this happens to be, as far as I'm very sensitive to the police memorial that sits out in front of City Hall, just, uh, south end of the building, and, uh, I feel this would just be, uh, something that would, uh, take away from the police memorial. I know this part of the Northland collection, it's a great piece of art and I would like to hope that it be put in this, uh, really a nice spot on this site somewhere, but not particularly in either the, the Veterans Memorial or the police memorial. I think those should be set aside by themselves.
Is that it?
Yes.
Is there any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll move that this, uh, item be, um, installed in another location other than by the police memorial on the city of Southfield site.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Ficassi, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that the, uh, Etrog, now, I gotta think how I'm gonna do this now. Are we, are we going to, oh, we already own the thing, so we don't have to accept it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Part of the Northland collection.
Okay, okay. Uh, it's been moved by Mr. Ficassi, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that the location be changed from the current, uh, proposed location to another location to be determined later? Is that?
And I'd like to see it on this site, but because it's really a pretty.
Yes.
Sculpture, art piece.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Morris?
I, I do like the fact that, uh, the Arts Commission has doing such a great job, but I, I'm not so sure that every piece of art is, that is donated, you know, we have to accept, but I do feel that, um, the different requests to place art in different places, they're coming so sporadic and if there was just an opportunity to see a strategic plan for the overall city, I think in the meeting earlier, um, Councilman Ficassi, as well as Council President Frazier, had suggested that maybe a plan be set forth to the council. Yes, we have elected, we have appointed the commission to provide suggestions, but at the end of the day, it is the council who is making the final decision on, uh, these pieces of art and where they should be placed. So, I'd just like to, um, also say that I'd like to see at least some kind of plan. It looks like the, uh, the members of the commission have some kind of idea on where they want art to be placed, but if we could just know, um, you know, what your ideas are, what your plans are, um, before, um, we are asked to vote, to vote, like, in, in on individual places, at least, at least we can see a plan for what you're, you're trying to do in terms of what you want to do with art. Um, I would like to see that.
Any other discussion? Uh, Mr. Brightwell?
Mr. Chair, I think we, we brought up in the, in the council, um, uh, study, that there, and I've requested this several months ago, uh, even when the art commission first established that, that we are presented with sites within the city that are appropriate for, um, piece of art, and it was indicated that in the art book, an art, uh, publication, that, that is, there is such a, a listing available to various sites in the city. I think that should be reminded, uh, shared again with the council because it seemed to keep coming up that, that, that there's no particular plan in place, but I think there's a, a document, at least that's what I heard from the planner, uh, that there's a document that lists the various slots, I mean, various places for, um, art to be placed. And, um, if there are, um, pieces of art, Northland art that's currently in storage, if we can, um, ideally go through that particular list, which, which has been published and say, "This is an ideal spot for this pick of, piece of art." It should, should be some foreplanning, uh, placed if we do have the locations already, um, established.
Uh, Mr. Cruz?
Yeah, I'm, I did, as I was mentioning in the study session, I actually liked the location of it. I thought it looked, um, very aesthetically appealing. I thought it fit nicely out front here and I would hope that we would go with it, but, um, at least at this point, I think that the request simply was just to authorize the seeking of bids for installation, that, so, does that location have to be firm now or can we just authorize the bids? I mean, is it, would that affect, would the bid process affect where it's located?
Well, uh, then my understanding is that when they came to us, they have a location and they want to have, go out to have bids for that location. And the motion is to find a new location. Okay, got you. Is there any, any other discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor of the motion, which is to find a different location for the Etrog, uh, sculpture, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Oppose.
Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please color roll?
Mr. Brightwell?
Opposed.
Mr. Ficassi?
Opposed.
You can't oppose your own motion.
Well, this, no, you're talking about opposing the item.
Your motion.
Say it again.
Pardon?
No, I'm in favor of it being located somewhere else, so it's yes.
That's what.
Well, that's what your motion is.
Yeah, okay.
But you can't, you can't oppose your own motion.
I, well, I just wanted a clarification, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Morris?
Can you read the motion again?
Ms. Morris?
Can you read the motion again, Council President?
I, I.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I believe the motion is to, um, change the, to approve the request, however, to change the location to another location within the city property. Is that correct?
Yes.
Support.
Mr. Mandelbaum? Yes. Mr. Cruz?
Oppose.
Mr. Frazier?
Oppose.
We have a tie vote, so the motion failed.
Okay. Uh, so, we are going to accept it and it's gonna go to the, right?
You already own it, so I guess.
Yeah, it's owned.
I mean, yeah, we're gonna, we're going to accept the bids to put it.
I think you need to know the location before you.
Well, the, the motion failed because it didn't get a majority of the votes. The motion failed to relocate it.
But there's no motion to place it out here either.
Okay, so we need a.
So you could try that motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we place the piece of art in the location which was suggested near the police memorial.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we authorize the acceptance of the, uh, location for installation of the Etrog sculpture. The, go out for bids. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
No. Aye.
Madam Clerk, would you please color roll?
Mr. Cruz?
Support.
Mr. Brightwell?
Support.
Mr. Ficassi?
No.
Mr. Mi- Ms. Morris?
Oppose.
Mr. Mandelbaum?
Oppose.
Mr. Frazier?
Report.
Um, three, three. The motion failed.
This will come up later on. We'll, uh, we'll postpone this motion until, or postpone this item until, uh, we have an odd number of people at the council. Uh, that completes the, uh.
Wait, 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 what do you mean, odd person?
Another odd person.
Because it's.
We have a number of public hearings. Public hearing A, uh, is the Economic Development Initiative.
Good evening. Um, as part of the city's ongoing economic development initiatives, the staff is in receipt of a request from SLT Holdings LLC for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate. This will aid in the renovation of the New Soul Gardens Restaurant. Rebecca Lazarus is here for, um, with a presentation, um, to go over their project. Um, there, um, we would be requesting, one, the establishment of an industrial development district, or the commercial rehabilitation, excuse me, district, um, at the first public hearing and then the following public hearing would be to, um, hear her request. Um, the city staff is supporting a ten year, uh, five-year, um, is suggesting five years on her request for, um, freezing the values at the, the current value. So I'd like to ask, um, Rebecca to come, come up. Good evening, Council President, Honorable.
Do you give your name and address for the record?
Oh.
Your address.
My name is Rebecca Lazarus. I'm here representing SLT Holdings. Their address is two seven five six six Northwestern Highway, Southfield, Michigan, four eight oh three four. Um, I'd like to say good evening again and thank you for allowing us to speak in front of you. Um, the presentation is to request a five to ten-year tax abatement. The property is, was built originally in nineteen eighty-three, nineteen eighty-three. It's a two-point-eight acres of property. It is currently a nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-four square foot building, single floor, and it has excessive parking currently, is a cement block construction and it has a taxable value just over a half a million dollars. Uh, the current state of the building, because it was built back in eighty-three by the Chi Cheese Corporation, is cosmetically renovated in ninety-one into the New Soul Garden Restaurant, which it is today. Um, it has operated as that for over twenty-six years in the current state that it's in. Um, on a normal transfer of liquor license on June twenty-second, the city inspections found that there was many obsolete, um, infrastructure necessary repairs that needed to be done and the owners agree with that and they would like to do some interior and exterior, extensive interior and exterior, uh, repairs to it. This is an example. There's many leaks in the roof. The exterior, um, condition is deteriorating. Uh, this is a twenty-six-year-old building. Some of the problems that this building has incurred, as well as the other properties on this Northwestern Highway strip between Telegraph and Bell Road, is that it has been an orphaned piece of Northwestern Highway and it's very difficult to get to. The street signs are improperly marked. There's actually, people think that it's eleven mile and, uh, there really is no signs for Northwestern Highway, so these businesses have suffered over the, uh, since early six, uh, nineteen sixties when six ninety-six was built. So we require that, we request the city to help overcome this serious problem for people and customers to find these businesses. Um, our proposed renovation is to completely renovate the existing, um, nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-four square foot building, interior and exterior, completely gutting it, turning it into, from a single Korean barbecue restaurant into three separate Asian in, uh, themed restaurants, an authentic Korean barbecue restaurant, a fusion restaurant with a bar and karaoke, and a French Korean café. We will additionally add on to the structure, uh, a new construction of a nine thousand square foot standalone building, which will be Gangnam Market, which will be featuring Korean specialty foods that no one can, uh, purchase anywhere around in this area. There will also be completely site improvements. Parking lot will be refinished and repaved, lighting, walkable paths will be added to encourage, uh, walking in the neighborhood and two garden patios will be added to the facility. This is an example of what our site plan has been approved. The market would be at the top and the existing building is at the bottom. This is the interior of how the, uh, current, uh, restaurant will be broken into. city to help overcome this serious problem for people and customers to find these businesses. Our proposed renovation is to completely renovate the existing 9,834 square foot building, interior and exterior, completely gutting it, turning it into, from a single Korean barbecue restaurant, into three separate Asian themed restaurants, an authentic Korean barbecue restaurant, a fusion restaurant with a bar and karaoke, and a French Korean café. We will additionally add on to the structure a new construction of a 9,000 square foot standalone building, which will be Gangnam Market, which will be featuring Korean specialty foods that no one can purchase anywhere around in this area. There will also be completely site improvements. Parking lot will be refinished and repaved, lighting, walkable paths will be added to encourage walking in the neighborhood, and two garden patios will be added to the facility. This is an example of what our site plan has been approved. The market would be at the top and the existing building is at the bottom. This is the interior of how the current restaurant will be broken into three different restaurants, and they will be sharing the same kitchen. This is a color elevation of the three restaurant facility, which would be the renovation, and this is the market. It would be a sister and brother building. With this development, we are creating at least 42 additional new jobs. We will also create around or over 35 new construction jobs, and the new S L T will invest over 2.1 million and going up to 4.2 million dollars into this renovation. They are definitely gambling on Southfield. We will hope that this sparks new urban renewal in this section. It has high visibility to travelers along Northwestern Highway and the M-10 North Lodge Freeway Strip, and it will bring new dining entertainment to Southfield. So, again, the request is to establish the commercial rehabilitation district, and they're requesting up to 10 years. Again, the city staff is requesting, is in support of five years for their freezing of the taxes. The new development will keep it frozen, but the city will continue to collect approximately $50,000 annually, and then once the property is uncapped, or the property goes back to its regular taxes, the city assessor will have been met, will go out and evaluate the property each year. So, we will continue to capture funds from the site. And we are looking to establish the district on the surrounding properties as well. As Ms. Lazarus has stated, this area has had some challenges over the years. I think that some of it started to occur when there was some redevelopment of the lodge, but Copper Canyon has suffered, Baymont. We understand that Plant Moran has some issues with their building, and so we wanted to include that whole district in all those properties within this district.
Oh.
Yes.
I thought you had more.
No.
Counsel?
It's a public hearing.
Oh, excuse me.
So, the public hearing would be for the establishment of the district?
Right, establishment of the district, okay. Is there any, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this? If you come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes. All I see is a white piece of paper. You don't have to come up here. I understand you can't talk. The note on there was that she supports the project. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, now it's counsel.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandelbaum?
Just a question for Ms. Freeman. Because in the presentation, it was mentioned that this area is not, the signage is not the greatest. Does the city have any plans? Because as I understand it, 11 Mile is a city-owned, there's a city street. Are there any plans for better signage to direct people to these locations?
We will work with, with the Public Works Department and planning to help address better signage. The city is also considering engaging a consultant to assist us with better branding on Telegraph Road, which will enable a better flow of traffic into this whole mixing bowl area. And so, we're in the process of working that out as well. So, we know that several years ago, we considered Telegraph to be a technology corridor, and so we want to try and formalize that branding for the road, and it'll include this whole district.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brightwell?
Mr. Chair, I support this endeavor, and I'm of the mind that raise the tide, rise the tide, raise all boats. I think that we get something going over there. And I know our accountant is down the street, and obviously I met with our accountant off and on, and one of the issues, when we were not talking about city financial matters, was direction to their particular office. And it's been a hardship for them to, you know, direct customers and/or individuals to their office. So, I think I've mentioned this before in the study session, that I would like to see something moving forward with respect to getting better wayfinding and/or signage to that particular strip, in that particular road. So, but I am in supportive of the project, and I think that they are doing a wonderful job in trying to redevelop that particular location.
Do you want to make a motion to establish the commercial rehabilitation district?
Yes, sir. I guess I guess. I make a motion that we establish the commercial rehabilitation district.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve the rehab, the commercial rehabilitation district under Act 210 of 2005. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then we'll take the recommendation of the staff.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to abstain due to the fact that Rebecca was secretary when I was acting mayor.
Do you have a financial?
No, we do not.
Okay. Okay. We'll accept his abstention, but it's usually a very narrow reason for abstaining if you have a financial or if there's a benefit.
When there's questions, I like to stay safe.
Okay, all right. All right?
So, the next public hearing would be to accept their application for S L T Holding LLC for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate for the PA 210. Again, staff is supporting a five-year exemption. The company will have the opportunity at the end of that five years to come back to city council to get an extension or an additional up to five years at the discretion of city council. So, it's not closing the door for them to get additional time. So, that would be built into the application. And I do want to note that the city staff, myself and Michael Radcliffe, have met with the other property owners and shared the opportunities for them to come forward at any time that they so choose to take advantage of this resource as well.
This is a public hearing, and if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this public hearing, I presume it's the same thing. She, she supports a five-year extension also.
Mr. Chairman, is there any aisle?
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record.
Hand up, okay.
And you have three minutes. You can talk. You don't have to write it out. It's just that she has a particular issue with her voice this evening. So, seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Mr. Cruz?
I'd like to move that we accept application from S L T Holding LLC for the commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate for the year, for five years.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Cruz, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Let the record show, there's five yays and one abstention. All right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Item C?
Mr. Chairman, before you move on to that, other than this property that we just voted on, but the signage there for, I don't know, when I was acting mayor, we tried to work with MDOT to try to get some kind of signs on Telegraph Road. Something really has, we have to get a traffic engineer to look at what can be done. You have Toys R Us that's sitting there and, you know, changed hands, but it's another thing. Why didn't they fix up the building before they put used cars on it? You know what I mean? And that didn't come to us to see whether or not it was sold, not sold, but it's also in that district, if I'm not wrong. Shelley? Toys R Us, is that in that district?
It was not added into this district.
Okay. Why not? Wasn't that involved in it?
There was some discussion of the concern regarding other auto dealerships, and there might be, it was just determined that it would not be added into the district.
Make any improvements on that piece?
I believe that they are planning on it, yes.
I'd like to have our planner follow through on that, because that's, they didn't do anything. They didn't even remove the, you can see Toys R Us still on it, and it's not maintained, it's not landscaped, it's not...
Right. Through the chair, we have not received an official application for that property. It is my understanding that the dealer has acquired it and possibly will combine a part of that for his fleet of parking cars and possibly open a second dealership in that building, but nothing has materialized to date.
Does that mean it stays the way it is after a new person buys a piece of property? I mean, it's really, and what I'm trying to get at, counsel, and Terry, is that if you get off of Telegraph Road, you go to Toys R Us, then you go to this other, the restaurant, then you go, there's an office building sits way back, and then there's Copper Canyon, then the hotel, and then we have Plant Moran, and then it comes, becomes Bell Road. So, the church has Bell Road address. Plant Moran has Northwestern address. I don't know what this one has, but it's just quite messed up. So, if you're looking for Northwestern, you know, we're just doing the improvement on Northwestern, west of Telegraph Road now. And, and nobody knows that this is Northwestern on the east side of Telegraph. And I'd really like to have that looked at for all those buildings, and I don't know how Plant Moran can sit there with all their office people and people trying to find that place, and they have a Northwestern address. But anyway, I'd just like to make that comment that something really has to be done with that piece. And the road is not very good either, so been neglected, that whole area.
Yeah, most people think US 10 is Northwestern Highway, which it is.
Yeah.
I don't know if the MDOT will be willing to put a sign up just beyond the bridge before the, before the entrance ramp off of US 10 that says Northwestern Highway, next traffic signal. I've seen those popping up recently to give you a warning that the, you know, a cross street is coming up in the next, you know, at the next traffic signal. So, that would be a helpful wayfinding sign. I don't know if they'd be willing to put another sign on Telegraph Road. They'd probably fall back and say, well, it's another opportunity for an accident, somebody to run into a, but they won't put it up if we don't ask.
I'll work with the city administrator and the city engineer, see if we can pursue that.
Sure. Okay. Public hearing C?
Through the chair. Our next public hearing is PSLU 17-0003, a special use request of World of Entertainment on behalf of the owner, Garmo Properties, to occupy a tenant space in the Majestic Market Shopping Center for a dance instruction studio properly located at 25843 Lasser Road. This is the southwest corner of Civic Center and Lasser Road. I have a brief video presentation.
Okay.
PSLU 17-0003 is a special use request of World of Entertainment on behalf of the owner, Garmo Properties, to permit a dance studio within the B3 General Business District. The property is located at 25843 Lasser Road within the Majestic Plaza Shopping Center at the southwest corner of Lasser Road and Civic Center Drive in Section 21 of the city. The subject property is Zone B3 General Business. The property to the north across Civic Center Drive is Zoned ERO, Education Research Office. The property to the south is Zoned RM, Multiple Family Low Rise. The property to the east across Lasser Road is Zone B3 General Business and OS, Office Service. The property to the west is Zoned R2, Single Family Residential. With regard to the existing land uses, the subject property is developed with the Majestic Plaza Shopping Center. To the north is a green belt for the property with Civic Center Drive and the Great Lakes Surgical Center beyond. To the south is a masonry screen wall with the Village Crest condominium development beyond. To the east is a parking lot for the shopping center with Lasser Road beyond. And to the west is a parking lot for the property with a masonry wall topped with a wooden fence. The site contains 1.92 acres of land with 377 feet of frontage on Lasser Road and a depth of approximately 225 feet along Civic Center Drive. The special land use request is to permit a dance studio within the B3 General Business District. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the special use were: special use standards and conditions of Article 18, General Business; Southfield comprehensive master plan noting local mixed use for this parcel; and the petitioners to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security.
The petitioner is here to make some opening comments.
Okay. If you'd give your name and business address for the record.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Tamara Patterson-Green, and this is my husband and business partner, Bobby Green. Our business is World of Entertainment located at 25851 Lasser Road, Southfield, Michigan, 48033. And as stated in the video, we are a dance studio seeking a special land use permit to conduct dance classes and dance events. Our hours of operation are Monday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday, 10:00 a.m. until 12:00 a.m. And Saturday, or excuse me, Sunday, 10:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. by appointment only. We liken ourselves to other dance studios that most are familiar with, such as Arthur Murray and Fred Astaire, and we offer a wider range of classes from bachata, Detroit ballroom, salsa, tango, and zumba. Our classes are taught by certified and/or well-seasoned instructors, and we also open, offer open dances where patrons may come and dance the various dance styles that they've learned, as well as other potential customers that are looking to learn with us. We've addressed previous concerns brought forth by the planning commission, which is that there, we will not be permitting alcohol use on our property, and we have posted no alcohol signs on the premises, and we will continue to monitor for any alcohol use should that present itself. We will, of course, ask the patron to remove it from our facility and/or exit at that time. In addition to that, for capacity and the control of occupants within our space at any one given time, was another topic that was presented, and we have addressed the issue by adding personnel to monitor the door during open dance events, as well as structured some future events to require preregistration. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
At this time, thank you.
Okay. Planner, do you have any other comments?
Not at this time.
Okay, if you take a seat. This is a public hearing, and you can sit right. This is a public hearing, and you can sit right, you can sit right there in case there's a question that comes up that you need to answer. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this public hearing? If you do, please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Seeing no one racing to the microphone, I will declare the public hearing closed. Counsel.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ficassi.
In reading the Planning Commission minutes that were attached to our agenda, there seems to be a lot of discussion regarding what this would be, the negatives of what would happen if this be permitted. And there's a lot of items that were mentioned by the board, and one that struck me was the, there's no alcohol on the premise. And when I went and looked at this property today, I found that, you know, there's a, like a break wall landscape between the alley and the parking lot in the back, and they've got a new wooden high fence in the back, looks like it was just built. But behind that fence is residential property, and to the south of this is RM, which is also residential. I don't, I don't mind the dance studio. I am concerned about some of the things that were raised in the meeting of the Planning Commission, and for example, when you look at it, you know, if it's a dance studio, I don't see a changing room where young people could go and they put in, on costumes. I don't know what events mean, and it's kind of looked at as to what kind of uses. Time that it's open till late at night in a residential area has concerned mine. The purchasing of alcoholic beverages three doors to the north and sitting in the back parking lot, and Mr. Administrator, somebody better get code over there in the back. I've got pictures of it, and it's disgrace, really. And it's all garbage all over the place. And because of that break wall, you have an opportunity of people just sitting back there and having drinks and going into the event, especially if it's later, because I really don't have any idea. It doesn't remind me of a dance studio that my grandchildren go to. It reminds me of an entertainment center. And I just would like to know whether or not it's an entertainment center for 41 people or it's a dance studio where parents take their children and they sit there, and are the 41 people counted? Are they the young people and then the parents who sit there and watch the young people dance during the day? I mean, 41 people, it's not a lot of people when you have a large class like they have at Lathrop, for example, at the City Hall. So I'm just talking about, you know, I've go to some of these rehearsals and things, and 41 people is just almost nothing. You fill a room pretty quick. And not only that, but, you know, there's Pepsi-Cola cases stacked up against the wall in the south wall where people climb over the fence, and nothing has been corrected. And I'm just wondering, when it mentions in the minutes about controls and who controls, whether or not somebody comes to the door inebriated or has a drink with them or has been drinking, even though there's no drinking in the building, you know, what is permitted outside at night, what goes on? I just think that, that this is the wrong place for this kind of a use in that neighborhood. And I am looking at all the concerns. Even the city planner was looking at it, saying, again, there's a difference between the use, that they may authorize and what the zoning permits, and there's four or five items that they're trying to define which would offer more controls. It's the four, four conditions that were recommended. I just, I just think that, that, and it's nothing against these individuals. I understand they had a dance studio before this, but they've never had one in a neighborhood shopping center, strip shopping center, where there's residential on two sides of it. And that really bothers me because we're the ones that are going to hear the noise at 12 o'clock at night, or the horns or whatever music at night. If it was different hours, I would have no opposition to it, but being there 12 o'clock at night, I really don't think that that would create anything but trouble.
What kind of hours are you considering, would you consider?
10 to 10 is reasonable time, I would think. When you get into midnight, then you're not going to, if you go at midnight, you're not going to just jump out of the door at midnight. You're going to hang around, going to get in the parking lot and converse, I mean, just like people do normally. So you're not out of that shopping strip till probably 1:00. And I just think that it's a, it's kind of a quiet neighborhood. You have the Hope Church there right kitty corner. You know, I just think that the choice of location is not appropriate.
Through the chair. All hours are 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. with the exception of Friday and Saturdays. Is that something that the petitioners can live with? Is a 10 or 11 o'clock maximum for Friday and Saturday?
If I may, I think we have businesses in there that close a little later than us.
I can't hear Mr.
Yeah, would you, speaking of microphone.
I think there are businesses there that may close a little later than us. There's a chicken, chicken place, pizza place, but we would take in consideration, we would consider 10 o'clock or 11.
Yeah, I think our noise ordinance is at 11.
Well, there's a noise ordinance that controls all, you know, all businesses.
Yes.
But since this is a special use, it is appropriate for council to set appropriate hours.
Mm-hmm.
And if Councilman Ficassi's concern is midnight, and I agree that there could be some loitering afterwards, and at least they're willing to possibly compromise at 11:00 p.m. for just Friday and Saturday as a compromise, just ask the council maybe to consider that and can make that as one of your conditions. I do, we did have many concerns when we first started vetting this. I think the Planning Commission and the applicants have worked together to try to resolve those issues by limiting number of people in there, by providing somebody at the door, by not allowing alcohol per right. There's always going to be policing issues. There is a liquor store right there, and some of the concerns that Mr. Ficassi has is really the owner of the whole shopping center. And I think through this special use process, these issues have been discovered, and there has been a resolution to try to mitigate these issues. You always have the right, if they violate, to revoke their special use if it becomes abusive. And maybe just as, as a compromise, maybe consider 11:00 p.m. on Fridays and Saturdays when they, when they tend to do more business. I would ask you to address that mostly, I believe, it's adult dancing. You can correct me if I'm wrong. It's more like an Arthur Murray's, not, not children classes per se.
Exactly. We are not a children's dance studio. We are an adult ballroom dance studio.
How much would it curb your program to reduce the hours from midnight to 11 o'clock on Friday and Saturday?
Well, understanding Councilman Ficassi's explanation that, you know, you don't leave right away, so if we shut down at 11:00 and it's understood that maybe, because we're not trying to go into the early mornings, but if we close at 11:00, excuse my voice, and, you know, it takes us to 12:00 to get out, I don't think that'd be a big problem.
Okay. I think that one of the things is that we have a history of other locations in Southfield that are not exactly like what you're proposing, but similar to what you're proposing, and was in an area that was very, was just adjacent to residential. And it took us probably three years, four years almost, to get that sorted out, to get it quieted down so that the residents felt comfortable with the establishment next door to them, because once they leave, once your patrons leave, they, you've really kind of lost control of what happens, and by the time you hear the horns honking and get out there, you don't know who honked the horns, and yet the next door neighbors don't really care. It was just somebody honking a horn, or if there's loud talking, which is what we experienced. And racing of engines, we sat here and listened to story after story of that, and we tried every kind of way that we could to ameliorate the problems. Finally ended up that, I think it changed ownership and it finally got resolved, so they're doing fine now. So we don't want to stop something if we can prevent it. So if the 11 o'clock cutoff time is workable for you, I would, I would recommend the council to include that in the, in the motion if we take a motion on this. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, last, one other thing. The people who go there to, to dance, would they, would they have, bring a partner with them? Would they, would they have a wife or a girlfriend or something with them, or would they go there and pick up somebody to dance with?
On our classes, you can.
Am I really talking reality here?
Yes, on classes, it's open to the public. You could come by yourself, or you could bring your partner or a significant other or someone that's, that wants to dance. On our celebrations, it's just like any other time. You would come, you may call a friend, meet the friend there, you may come by yourself. But we're mainly adult, we would dance studio, and it's not, even some of the planning commissioners, they've been there themselves. There is no noise issue. There is, you couldn't hear our noise if you sat in the parking lot, at the end of the parking lot in front of our house, I mean, in front of our business. So there's not a real noise issue, but we mainly deal with adults, mainly seniors.
Well, that question I asked is because we've had situations in the city where flights have broke out because of situations, and, and we've suffered under that as a city. And I just think that, that, you know, I just look at going and learning how to dance would be a couple going or friends going together, but I, I just have a real problem with, with the policing of that kind of, you know, having an event and it be an entertainment mecca. And I have a problem, so I, I don't wish that on anybody have a problem, but I know that we've experienced several incidents in the city that have really rocked this city and hurt this city, and I just don't want that to be happening, and I'd be for something that would encourage it.
Now, you, you do have security people?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Just get good security people.
Indeed.
Okay. Mr. Brightwell.
I think this probably come up during the study session, when the young lady was made her presentation a couple of weeks ago. And you mentioned that from a sound standpoint, is, and the decibel level, is there, the size of your music, is there, the music, what, are you, you know, well, what assurance do you give us the music cannot be heard outside your door, outside the door of your property? Is there a unique installation in there?
No, it's just the sound level that you turn the sound level to.
Okay.
The president of the planning commissioner has been in there.
Okay. All right. And most of your clients will be adult age clients?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Fine. Good.
Okay. Ms. Manalbaum.
Yes. In the, again, in the planning commission minutes, it's alluded to that there have been possible police issues in the area. Is that related to the general area with the liquor store and the others, or is it related to this particular business?
This, this business has occupied the site since last October, and there was an incident that came to our attention about allegedly underage drinking. Can't attribute that, whether it's the party store, the parking lot, or the dance studio. And that is, that is why subsequently they've had to come in and try to get retroactive approval. And we were very clear from the get-go about the alcohol, whether it's buy sale or bring your own, that we, we, you know, strongly recommended against it, and that would be one of our conditions, and they agreed to that. Another condition at the time was that possibly they exceeded their maximum occupancy.
Correct.
And they agreed to limit that, and they put controls in to make sure that that didn't get exceeded. So maybe some of the naity of moving in and signing a lease without getting the proper approvals and growing pains of the business came to light, which, you know, here we are almost nine or 10 months later trying to get them officially approved with conditions that can be enforced.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a couple of questions. One is, on the Friday night, Saturday night, when you have the entertainment portion, not the dance classes, because I would presume that the dance, you subscribe to the dance classes. You pay a fee to have a certain amount of lessons.
You pay an entry fee, so we do have a drop-in rate, or you can purchase a package which will offer you the benefit of buying a group of lessons?
Okay. But for the, the non-dance lesson time, the free time, the entertainment portion, is that pay at the door? Is that how you?
Well, as we stated, the open dance portion, we have set for our future events to require preregistration. Should we consider it an event that could possibly grow outside of our capacity? If it's something that we know is a rather small dance session, then we would monitor the door by having someone keep count of attendees and making sure that we stay within those constraints.
Okay. Now, every business in every, every location has to have two entrances or exits.
Yes.
You have a back door exit?
Yes, we do.
Is that monitored, will that be monitored so that someone can't block the door open and let their friends in the back door?
Correct. It's, it's not in a place that is, I would guess, easy to access in the sense of someone would be unnoticed if they stood there and held the door open. It's our second safety exit, so.
It's primarily an exit door rather than an entrance door?
Correct.
So people aren't coming in from both doors?
No, you cannot.
Because you can quickly overrun the approved numbers by having people coming in both doors at the same time.
No, you don't, you don't have access to our rear door from the outside.
Okay. Any, any other questions? I need a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Manalbaum.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve PSLU 17-0003 with the planner's recommended resolution with the addition of Friday and Saturday evening hours ending at 11:00 p.m.
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Manalbaum, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we approve PSLU 17-0003, special use, with the conditions cited by Mr. Manalbaum. 17-0003 special use with the conditions cited by Mr. Manalbaum. Is there any further discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose.
Let the record show that there's five yays, one nay. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. You probably won't see me over there because I can't dance. We have the final public hearing, PSLU 17-0005.
Yes, through the chair. PSLU 17-0005 is a special use request of Lindhout Associates Architects on behalf of the owner, IXL Learning Center, to use residential property for a playground associated with a permitted use of the existing building for a childcare center located at 15600 West 12 Mile Road. And I have a brief video.
PSLU 17-0005 is a special use request of Lindhout Associates Architects on behalf of the owner, IXL Learning Center, to permit a playground within the RA Single Family Residential zoning designation. The property is located at 15600 West 12 Mile Road, on the north side of 12 Mile Road, between Marshall Street and Greenfield Road in Section 12 of the city. The subject property is Zone B3 General Business, RA Single Family Residential, and P Vehicular Parking. The property to the north is Zone P Vehicular Parking. The property to the south across 12 Mile Road is Zone OS Office Service. The property to the east is Zone B3 General Business. The property to the west is Zone OS Office Service. With regard to the existing land uses, the subject property is developed with a vacant office building. To the north is a masonry wall separating the property from residential homes fronting Marshall Street. To the south is parking for the subject property with 12 Mile Road beyond. To the east is the existing vacant office building proposed for daycare use. To the west is a portion of the parking lot and wood fence. The site contains 1.2 acres of land with 225 feet of frontage on 12 Mile Road and a depth of 257 feet. The special land use request is to permit a playground within the RA Single Family Residential zoning district associated with a proposed childcare learning center. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the special use were: Special use standards and conditions of Article 5 Single Family Residential Districts; Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan noting local mixed use and residential use for these parcels; and the petitioners to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security.
The petitioner and the architect are here to make some opening statements. Again, I want to remind council that we're not approving the commercial daycare use. It's already permitted. This is to use the adjacent residential lot for tot lot.
Okay. Hi, it's nice to see you all again.
Would you give your name and business address for the record?
The business address, okay. Jennifer Moss. It's, the business address is 15600 12 Mile Road, Southfield. I don't know the zip code yet by heart. I probably should learn that. Might be helpful. And this is Lindsay, who is my partner. She currently runs our Birmingham location, which is three miles away. And she will be running the facility, if approved, in Southfield. So everyone's here really late, so I'm going to try and be really brief. We met before, and you kind of already know my history a little bit, so I won't waste too much time going back on that. What I would like to speak to a little bit about is the demand. We have a location that's three miles away at 14 and Woodward. So normally, it's probably not normal business practice to locate one so close. But we've been looking for four years because of the high demand of the area and the amount of people that we turn away. So Lindsay fields those calls almost every day. We have 150 family waitlist currently at our Birmingham location. And we already have nine families signed up for Berkeley. And we haven't done any advertising, we haven't told anybody anything about it whatsoever. They've already put actual money down. What else was I going to say about that?
I think in terms of the need, I get people who will email me a weekly picture of their newborn, showing me how cute they are, trying to make space. People will try and jokingly give us cash offers to make space for them in our facility. So our hope is just really to create a space where we can say yes to these families that need this care, as opposed to having to add them to a long list of current families.
Yeah. The other thing is, is you have the closing of the Beaumont facility that created even more of a need. So, okay, so we know there's a need, I'll move on from that. Our hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We are not open evenings, we're not open weekends. I have a sample, I brought a sample schedule down. So really, the hours that the playground would be used are from 9:30 to 11:30, and then children go in for nap and lunch and everything, and then from 3:00 to 6:00. So of the day, the playground would be in use for five hours, and it wouldn't be all the children. You can see from our schedules that, you know, we stagger them. And so a classroom, a couple of classrooms might go out and be out for like 45 minutes in the morning and in the evening. So it's not like there's 100 kids on the playground or anything like that. So we are a, we're very high quality. We are a structured play-based program. I'd also like to address the fact of privacy. We would be more than happy when we construct the playground, and most likely in the spring. We can either put up new arbivites or whatever, or we can remove the fence and put a privacy fence. So whatever is more suitable to the council. I also, you guys are well-versed in what you do, and you know the need for childcare in the facility, in the planning of a city. So that's really what we're trying to do here. I also want to mention that as far as being an employer, we try very hard to be really good stewards of employership. In the last year alone, we've, since we've been able to get bigger, you know, we have five other locations. We began offering 401K health plans. And most recently, we did a increase to our families, and all of the proceeds or all of the tuition went to our teachers. So the teachers on May 1st all got, across the board, a 15% raise. So we're very considerate. We try very hard to be a flexible, good place to work as well. So we think we bring that to the community as well. Did I forget anything? I don't think so.
Did you see your credentials?
Oh, Lindsay.
Yes, I am current director of Birmingham, and I, my experience is that I have a degree in elementary education.
Okay.
Any questions, or is this not question time?
Well, not from us.
Okay.
If you take a seat there, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak, come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Yes, hello, good evening. My name is Jahan Youssef. I live in 1596 Marshall Street, 29, sorry, 2906 Marshall Street, which is right next my property, next to the daycare center. So I get small chance to talk to owners and these ladies outside, and we talk about some small issue I have. I have some senior citizens live with me, and I also work in medical field, and my brother work at night shift. So we need to have some kind of relax at home or sleep property. So what happened is, we talk about the hours and all, so seems like most of the day the kids are going to be outside. The only concern I have about is the noise and all this. They said they're going to be able to control the noise, but there is no way, because kids, when they go outside, there is no way you can control them. And so I'm worried about that part. They talk about the privacy also, which is, I like the idea they have about that privacy. But the most important thing for me is, I need to relax in my home, and we need to sleep property. So they said they're going to be able to work on that, but I don't think so, because kids, it's kids. When they go outside, there is no way you can control them. So the only concern I have about is the noise, which is, they also said something about 40 kids, at least, they're going to be outside in daytime. And especially, like I said, the schedule they have, it's fully, almost the whole day the kid's outside.
Okay. You have anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else that wishes to come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record?
Nahil Kalibet. I'm the property owner. She's my tenant, Ms. Jahan Youssef, so it's 29068 Marshall Street, which is directly next door to where the proposal for the playground is. Noise is a big concern to us, obviously. Privacy is another concern. I need something where I know that there's going to be some sort of a fence, or something where there's, you know, total privacy on our part, as far as potential, you know, future tenants, or if we actually decide to sell the property at some point. I need to have that peace of mind, knowing that I don't want 40 kids, or whatever the class is, yelling and screaming, and that's inconvenient to the current resident, as far as, like I said, in case we decide to sell to a future, the owner. I don't know if it's going to take anything away from the value of the house, you know, having that next door like that. That's a possibility as well. So between that, the privacy and the noise, those are the biggest two concerns we have. And that's all I have to say, really.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Mallory Sharp, 2482 Oakshire Avenue, Berkeley, Michigan. I'm currently pregnant, we're due in a few weeks, and we're actually a family that did sign up for the IXL new location. This is, it's a very hard search to find a daycare that would offer part-time like we need. So this was a huge, huge win when we got in at this location, because we did tour the Birmingham location. And unfortunately, the waitlist was so long that when the new location came out, we thought that would be a great opportunity for our growing new family. So this is really important to us, and it's also important that when he's old enough, that he'll be able to play outside and get that fresh air. That's really important, so, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is Doug Labby. I'm at 2866 Oakshire Avenue in Berkeley, Michigan, as well. I just wanted to piggyback on the previous speakers. My wife is currently pregnant, due in December, and we toured the Birmingham location for IXL, and it's a very high-quality facility. They have a lot of good things going on there, so I can only imagine that the location in Southfield would add value to any residential or other commercial use around it. And I'm very much in support of the location. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Elaine Yafi, 16960 George Washington, Southfield, Michigan, 48075. I have a question for them. Do I...
You ask the question, and we'll have them answer it, yeah.
Okay. My question is that your other locations, I'm not familiar with them, are they also located in a residential or near-residential area? And have you had any problems with the residents that live in around those other areas? Now, do I...
Go ahead.
Actually, our Birmingham location is in a, we're in a church, which is located in a neighborhood. So it's never been a problem that I know of.
Do the children go outside to play?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We have a huge playground there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Counsel?
One question. With all the construction, you had applicants that are speakers that came up that said that they plan to send their soon-to-be children to the center. How long will it take from, once you, have you started construction, what's, when do you plan to open this location?
Well, we all know that construction takes longer than anticipated, so, you know, but we were hoping for January 1st. It really depends on what happens here, and I guess that's really, we're hoping for January 1st.
Okay. And I know one of the speakers had a question about some of the screening or the fencing. And I know that it was, we have pictures, and it was talked about, but if you can just, for the speaker and the, who had the concern, if you don't mind.
You mean, talk about the fencing?
From the playground to the residence next door.
Oh, did you want to answer?
Yes, I'm Dave Richardson from Lindhout Architects, 10465 Citation Drive in Brighton. And there is an existing fence and existing pine trees on that line. Part of our plan was to improve those and replace any damaged or not-trimmed pine trees. But now, hearing the concerns of the neighbor, I talked to Jennifer, and it's, she's willing to stipulate that that fence be upgraded to an eight-foot privacy fence in addition to the pine trees. So hopefully, that helps the neighbor situation, in addition to the hours that she discussed, where it's limited because to control, not, control is the right word, but to have all those kids, there's only so much time they could spend on the playground.
For the chair? If we only allow six foot fences.
That's what I was just going to say. They can seek a waiver to go higher, and we have had cases, the 12 and Southfield Road, where an eight-foot wall was actually constructed. But I heard the applicant say they're willing to upgrade the fence and put arbivites, and we can administratively review the proposed upgrade of the fencing. They do have decorative wrought iron, I think, for the rest of the site, but adjacent to the neighbor, we could come up with a nice quality residential fence that will help attenuate any noise issues, and then having additional planting. There is a large kind of overgrown hedge there, and the trade-off is, you're going to, if you want to put a fence in, you're going to lose some of that hedge in order to put that fence in. We had a similar situation next to Vibe, where a number of trees had to come down in order to put the fencing and new landscaping. But between the hours of operation, the fact that these, there's always going to be adult daycare workers there, the limited hours, and the additional screening, I think we can address the noise issue.
Well, I'm sensitive to the neighbors with their concerns about noise, but I'm also sensitive to children. And children need an opportunity to express themselves. If we curb the children from laughing and having a good time, then we need a lot, we'll probably need a lot more psychologists.
I thought you were really going there. I was like, um, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I had to pause for a second.
To figure out what went wrong, so. But we'll make a decision here.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Fracassi?
Yeah, I'm very familiar with that area, and this building has been vacant for quite a while, and it's great that it's being used and used for this purpose. You know, as far as the noise, you know, we approve daycare in residential neighborhoods, and nobody says, you know, the noise factor is a problem when they can have up to 12 children in there and running around the backyard. So I just think that the change that the architect has offered is good, and I don't think you need an eight-foot high wall. I think six with everybody would take away the sound. But that's my opinion. But I'm also for this.
Mr. Brightwell?
Mr. Chair, will the western part, the western fence, will that still remain wrought iron, or you put some landscaping there? What's the proposal with that?
Is that the one that's on the street side?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can make it privacy all the way around.
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes. But it's a question.
But the police, we would want to talk to the police department because of experience on other... on other properties says they wanna see, they wanna see from Marshall also, if there's any problem. So we wanna address the north side, but we don't think we wanna go privacy on the Marshall side, so that the police have a chance to see through the playlot.
Okay. Well, well, what is appropriate from a crime prevention standpoint, uh, but from a landscaping standpoint, uh, architectural standpoint, are there certain shrubbery and/or wood, or something that is more conducive to buffering sound?
The, the arborvitae would, the arborvitae would do that. Arborvitae or evergreen that's gonna stay throughout the year.
That's a good buffering?
Yes.
For sound? I'm, I am too concerned.
In addition to the fence.
Okay. And, well, I'm obviously concerned about, we, we had the residents here, and they were concerned about noise. And I know we've, uh, approved several daycare, home, uh, daycares, uh, since I've been on board. Uh, and I understand the, the need, uh, based on a prior daycare person here. She was also mentioned at Beaumont Closing, also obviously created a, a big need for them. Uh, but the shrubbery and/or fence, am I being told, and, and plus with the, with the opening for crime prevention, that this will be a buffer of basically noise? You know, just realize, I've been around kids, and I understand when they are active, they are active. So, is that what I'm hearing?
I don't have any, I, noise, as far as noise is concerned, I'm, I, I wouldn't be an expert in it. I would, I think defer to Terry more. You'd probably know a little bit more, but I would guess you're bouncing off of something else, right?
Well, um...
Pardon? Oh, well, in Birmingham, also we have a chain link, and the neighbors don't seem to be bothered by it. We don't have any privacy or any shrubs or anything around it.
Okay. You, you have residents nearby?
Yep, mhm, across the street, like, right there.
Okay, well, am, am I being assured that what they are gonna do with fencing and shrubbery that will buffer the, the obvious natural sound that's coming?
It definitely will help. And, um, if you can make that one of the conditions, administratively approve the fence and the arborvitae hedge.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Nothing's gonna drown it all out, but, uh, a little, a little bit will help. Is there any other comment from counsel? I need a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Fercassi.
Mr. Chairman, I move that, um, PSLU one seventeen dash zero 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 five be approved.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Fercassi, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approve PSLU seventeen dash zero 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 five. Is there any further discussion? Are we prepared to vote?
There's a friendly amendment to, to include the additional fence and the arborvitae hedge.
Including the fence and the arborvitae. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no site plan this, for this evening. We do have a large number of commu, people that have asked for communications. Uh, uh, the first person is Mary Ann Burt. If you'll come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes. Uh, I don't see any, anyone coming. Uh, the second person is Gregory Keeler. If you'd come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Greg Keeler, twenty-five one seven zero Circle Drive, Southfield, Michigan. In two thousand and eleven, sewer line was supposed to be installed on Circle Drive. The equipment had been dropped off and everything, and then a month later was removed. So there is no sewer line placed there. Six years later now, you have sent out a letter to us that if your system fails, you have to connect to the public sanitation system. What sanitation system? We have no sanitation system. How do we connect to a sanitation system according to section two one zero four and two one zero five of the city, um, code? There, there was a letter sent out in April that said you, um, had to connect up to it. To this date, there is no sanitation line out there. There is no, any, any indication that there is any line that will be placed out there. This action has disabled the residents of Southfield from retiring in their homes, like some of the leaderships I know here that wants to retire in their homes. We can't retire in our homes if our systems do fail. We have to move. Lawrence Tech has knocked down four homes on Circle Drive, because their systems fail. There is no adjust, there is no safety net, there is nothing there set aside that you can tap into the system. So I would like to know, will we be able to live in peace in our neighborhoods? Will there be something done to put forward to we can live there happily? I know me and the mayor have talked about this beforehand, and I warned him. I said, I put the letter in, and I will be coming in front of the board and talking about that. So this was put down as an immediate action to happen for all the residents to do this, but there has been no immediacy for the city's part to make anything for us to be able to connect to our sewer system. And then, as far as, what I heard what you saying with one of the companies that was coming here, as far as the noise and level for the city people, the residents of Southfield, six years ago, I complained to the people there on council. Then, at that time, the noise and problems we were having with Lawrence Tech and the parties and everything else, and we still had them. I told them it was gonna get worse, and it did. Last week, after eleven o'clock, since that's your curfew time, one o'clock. Couple of times I have called the police and told them. I said, no, come over. They'll flag you down as to go to parking, where the party is at. So there is noise there for us and everything else. So as you're nitpicking all these things, think about it also for us residents there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next person is Elaine Yaf.
Yafi.
Yafi?
Yes.
Give her name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Yep, one second. Elaine Yafi, one six nine six oh George Washington Street, actually Drive, Southfield, Michigan, four eight oh seven five. I've lived in my house in Southfield on George Washington Drive since I was twelve years old. That comes out to fifty-two years. I'll let you do the math. The city of Southfield has gone through its ups and downs, and I've lived through them all. And here are some questions and concerns that I have, and I hope that the council can answer them and to please look into them. I realize that there must be a street cleaning schedule, and if there is one, is it posted on your website? Here is what I experienced. Just this past Thursday, I was, um, the garbage and recycle pickup day. I was driving behind the street cleaning truck through the detour route to get to Ten Mile Road, and he was driving around aimlessly. Why? Because he couldn't do his job due to the fact that the garbage cans and garbage bags were on the street, excuse me, on the street. I found this a complete waste of gas and pollution to the environment for absolutely no reason. Shouldn't there be a coordinated effort between the street cleaning and the garbage collection day? That is a question I have for the council as number one. I also tried to find the end date for the Ten Mile Road project. I'm sure it's somewhere on your website. Um, many people in the neighborhood have told me that it's supposed to end, um, at the end of August. I find that hard to believe. Um, if there is one, I'd like to know where I can find that. I have pictures here that I would like to share with the, with the, um, council of Pierce, south of Ten Mile Road, and what it looks like after a short rainfall. I'm sure that when I go home tonight, I'm going to find a lovely pool. Um, this is a despicable, um, uh, despicable situation. Um, how many of the council members have actually taken a drive through that neighborhood while we've gone through this construction for over a year? Um, whoever was hired to install the grass in the areas that were dug up for the sewers, they did a horrible haphazard job. I have pictures of that also, where you could see the sidewalk has, um, debris of, of, uh, dirt on it, as well as the street. Um, there's also no detour signs posted south of Pierce, and so we've had already two cars that had to be, um, removed by a neighbor by, with his Jeep, because they went into the, into that area. A woman stopped me as I was driving, uh, as I was walking my dogs, 'cause she didn't know how to get out of the area, 'cause there were no signage. I'd also like to know if the council members are aware of the street signs and other debris that's lying all over in the city's right-of-way, as well as in the streets. This is a hazard, and if you drive in that area, you will see that. Also, on my city of Southfield Water and Sewer Department invoice, there's something that says a charge for streetlight district charge. Could someone please tell me what this is for? Because on August ninth, I contacted DTE.
Your time is up. You've given up. If you'll take your list and given it, give it to the city clerk, she'll give it to the city administrator, if you have it listed, if you have it listed.
I don't have a listing. I only have...
But you have only three minutes.
Right, so what should I do now?
Then, if you have a, if you have a list...
I have to write a list now?
If you could, so we'll know what all of the, the problems are.
Okay.
Thank you. The next person is, uh, Mr. Keith Harris. If you have a, give your address for the record, please.
My P.O. Box number, All Race and Life Matter, is, um, twenty-seven sixty-nine, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. I'm here on the behalf of our organization and our community, um, Detroit Eviction Coalition Moratorium Now. Um, we're asking you to create a moratorium to stop ordinance fifteen seventy-one. Um, understand this, our septic tanks are not an environmental problem. If they were an environmental problem, back when you had the ordinance in nineteen ninety-eight, ordinance fourteen thirty-three, that gave you eighteen years to fix this problem. Why did you wait until all these new homeowners bought these houses to enforce, to create a new ordinance in, um, in nine, in two thousand and nine? And then you enforced that ordinance in twenty sixteen. Now, come on now, come on. People are losing their homes. And, um, we can't, we can't do this. We can't do this to our residents. I mean, we got people, young, young families over here, older families like myself. And this ordinance is a setup for failure, asking us to borrow money that you know we can't pay back. Anywhere between twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars, and then contractors who cannot be honest, inspectors who are lying, and actually fraudulently lying on their inspection sheets by not saying our homes is, uh, two hundred feet away from the street. My home is every, two hundred and eighty feet away from the street, but the inspector put less than two hundred feet on there. Why? I paid them three hundred dollars to lie? Come on. This is only gonna get worse. And I'm asking you people to stop this right now. Think about it. No more, no more inspections, no more, um, enforcing this ordinance until you see it a little bit further. It's got to be thought about a little bit better. And I think Tanya Morrison, I mean, Ms. Morrison, didn't you say you were an engineer? Are you an engineer? So I'm wondering. And then Dan, I heard you say you the numbers man. So put the numbers together. That's all I'm asking. Where do we get the money? You, you know, this is a shakedown for the community, and you all know this. You and Dan, didn't I just hear you say, you're trying to pay a water bill back for Northland? And you cut, you cut a deal. Now cut us one by cutting it out, okay? Thank you. And I'd like to leave you something here, in case you wanna know more about our organization.
The next person is Mr. Gerard Mullin. No, please. Please, no demonstrations.
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. Mr. Chairman, last June nineteenth, at a council study session, this council voted on a proposed charter amendment, an amendment designed to take power from the voters and give it to the city administrator. That is, convert the elected offices of the city treasurer and of the city clerk into appointed staff positions under the control of the city administrator. On the surface, the amendment failed on June nineteenth, but did it really fail? I don't think so. Let's take a closer look. Prior to the vote, the chair stated that the amendment must pass by a three-fifths vote. The chair was correct about this. Section eleven point one eight of the charter mandates this. But I say that this amendment didn't fail. Here's why. Let's do the math together. The chair stated, that, excuse me, the chair started to poll the council. First Councilman Cruz voted no, and then Councilwoman Morris voted no. And then, at that time, the chair stated it wasn't necessary to go further. The amendment had failed. But did it really fail? I say it didn't, and here's why. There was a quorum of six council persons at that time. Councilwoman Seymour wasn't present. Two no votes leaves the possibility that the remaining four council persons could have voted yes, making the vote four to two, which is two-thirds, or sixty-six and two-thirds percent, whereas three-fifths equals sixty percent. Sixty-six and two-thirds percent is greater than sixty percent. Do the math. The amendment would have passed if the remaining four council persons had voted yes, but they weren't polled by the chair. I'm surprised that no one here at this council didn't catch this error. What is troubling to me is this. If you folks can't do fifth-grade math, how can you possibly manage Northland? I think you folks should stick to the basics, like governing and not trying to manage commercial property. Thank you.
The next person is Stacy Jackson. If you'd come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Stacy Jackson, two one six eight five Rougewood Drive, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three three. I am here to echo the sentiments of all the residents behind me in objection to ordinance fifteen seventy-one. Quite frankly, I am here to assert that the city of Southfield has been executing selective application of a universal city ordinance known as fifteen seventy-one. I am here to claim and assert that the city of Southfield has failed to notify, apply, and enforce ordinance fifteen seventy-one to all homeowners with septic tanks from Eight Mile to Twelve Mile, Greenfield to Inkster. Every homeowner with a septic tank should have received a letter at the exact same time to enforce this ordinance. I fear they have not. That is an unlawful action and selective. That is much like, in the beginning of the session, us singling out Councilwoman Morris for a septic, because she is a woman, but not targeting the rest of you, because you're men with a septic. It is unlawful. I am here to assert that the city allowed previous homeowners to go decades without this ordinance being applied to them. In fact, one resident supplied us with an or, a letter that came from the city of Southfield, which states, and I'll be very quickly. The purpose of this letter is to advise the members of the Beechwood Acres Subdivision Association Board, NU, the current Southfield City Council, fully supports the commitment that the prior city council made to the residents of the community regarding this sanitary sewer project. It goes on to state, quote, "The changes are that the residents are not automatically forced to put in a sewer. If a septic system is functioning properly, then nothing has to be done. If in three years, the system is checked and it is okay, you still do not have to do anything. If the system is checked and it is not okay, then it is responsibility of the resident to decide what they are going to do. The city is not going to tell you that you have to tap into the sewer system. You will have the option of fixing your system, moving it to your site, or tapping in. They have an alternative now, so that if their septic system fails and they cannot be fixed, they will have the option to tap in." It goes on, 'cause I noticed the time is going. Further states, "We are doing the best we can to provide, to prepare the site down the road if and when it needs. The cost will not occur now and will only occur when and if there is a failed system and the owner chooses to tap in." and the owner chooses to tap in because there is no other choice," end quote. It further states, stated in the same manner, administratively, the property owner, resident, will not be required to hook up to the sanitary sewer system if there is another acceptable solution to the problem. If a failed septic system can be rebuilt, it may be rebuilt even if it costs more than it would to connect to the sewer system. The final decision is left to the property owner," end quote. That comes directly from a previous city administrator. With that being said.
Time is up. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
No demonstrations, please, or I'll ask you to leave. No demonstrations, or I'll ask you to leave. The next person is Walter Meisen. If you give your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Walter Meisen.
You have three minutes.
I live at 22030 Rougewood, in the beautiful Beechwood Acres Homeowners Association area. We live on the banks of the Rouge River. Our water levels are very high. We have some unique problems. One in particular, I would invite all of you to go down Beach Road, turn onto Rougewood and the second house on your left. You'll see the mess that's been made of their front lawn. This has cost, charged at least $55,000 so far. He's still not hooked up to the city sewer, and he can't move into his property. I would like for you to take a look at that. Drive by and see the kind of mess that has resulted. Now, our problems are not as bad as those in, in Texas right now, but I'll tell you, we are also in danger of losing our homes, and we're concerned about this just as much as those in Texas. We wish that you would put a moratorium on this ordinance until solutions can be found to fix the problems. And would like very much, as are our elected officials, if you look into this matter and see what you can do about rectifying the situation that is not solvable by us. We cannot find contractors to do the work that you're insisting that we have done. We're being taken to court. We're being given notices to vacate our properties because they're not legal with our septic systems. You'll be hearing from more people from the subdivision that have got unique problems that you'll, that they'll address at that time. Thank you.
The next person is Diane Thomas. No, turn over the page. The next person is McNeil Jones, Jr. The next person is Stacy Dick. If you give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Dick, 21770 Maplewood Drive. I'm here to discuss ordinance 1571. I am the past president of the Beechwood Acres Homeowners Association, which consists of 144 homes. Many of us are here today. I am appalled at the way ordinance 1571 has been enforced and enforced with residents of the Beechwood Acres Homeowners Association. Placing stickers on family homes stating that their home is condemned because they have not hooked up to the city sewer, calling residents to come before the Water Board Commission every month because they have not hooked up to the city sewer, has been a very, very stressful and threatening situation. The residents that I have next to me has been before the commission on a monthly basis. As many of the residents will be telling you today, we need you to look at ordinance 1571 and put a moratorium on the whole process until we can come together as a community and come up with a creative solution that will address the unique needs of Beechwood Acres. Forcing people, threatening people, is not what leadership does. Leadership works together by example, not by threats.
My name is Shayla Glass. I live at 22205 Maplewood. As Stacy stated, I've been in court multiple times for this over the past year. I have been bullied into tying in to the point where there is a consent order mandating that I have to be tied in by September 25th. Now, we had a meeting with city officials a couple weeks ago where I was told, you don't have to worry about that. We're going to get this sorted out, and then we'll get back to you. I sent an email to follow up the following day, and I was sent another consent order with a different date on it. We're getting different information. Nothing is consistent from city officials all the way to contractors who are supposed to be doing this work. I've gotten multiple bids. None of them are consistent. I've talked to companies who have done work in the neighborhood who don't want to touch our properties. My septic tank sits below the sewer line, so gravity would be an issue. I would have to put a pump in my home to pump waste up and out. We have power outages on a regular basis, so when the power is out, like it was in March, where I was without power for six days, I would have waste sitting in my home. I would not be able to use my facilities, and I think that's a concern. Another concern I have is the inspectors coming out and intentionally damaging pipes in our septic systems. That's an issue. Thank you.
We are going to continue to come before you in this manner and other manners. We are not going to stop, and we need your assistance, please. And we want to do this peacefully, as a community should, with your assistance. Thank you.
The next person is Tanya Stovall. The next person is Toby Rhodes. Give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Toby Rhodes, 17001 New Jersey, Southfield, Michigan, 2485697189. And I want to let every black person in Southfield know that there's a clear color line with the City of Southfield. They're specifically targeting black people. They target me with the police. They're targeting you with your homes. They target you using the city attorney, code enforcement. But they want to take your property. You got to look at the, the economy of Southfield. The, the economy's been declining for at least five years, and more and more of our tax dollars are going toward the police. The City of Southfield, to make up for the shortfall that they anticipate coming, they're going to have to steal your properties. And one of the scams they're using is the septic tank scam, because there's no legitimate reason for doing it. I'm connected to the sewer system in the City of Southfield. In August 12, 2014, they backed up sewage, raw sewage into my basement, causing thousands, millions of dollars in the whole community. And they didn't pay not one single dime to anybody in the neighborhood for all the damage they caused. Now they're coming to you and saying that you got to fix your septic tank. It's just a scam to, to get you into debt, get leaned on your property, and then take your home. And they're specifically targeting black people, because in the last 10, 15 years, the population of Southfield has gone from majority non-black to majority black. And that scares these people who aren't black. I mean, if, if you don't believe me, look at the police department. They don't hire black people. Look at the city administrator, not black. City planner, not black. City attorney, not black. In a lot of cases, these people don't even live in Southfield, yet they'll come into your community and tell you what to do as if they have any authority to do so. They can't vote. They can't serve on a jury. They don't pay any taxes. I would recommend everyone who has these, these problems, every black person, to just go to court. Go in front of a judge. Tell them what the City of Southfield's doing to you. Tell them the, the history that the City of Southfield has not followed up any, any, any things that they said they were going to, that they were going to do with the septic tanks. They didn't notify anybody. They didn't contact anybody. They waited six years. I mean, it shows that they weren't really serious about so-called health issues. I mean, that's ridiculous. I mean, the city attorney came into that meeting, don't have no background in healthcare, no background in, in, in the medical field, and she going to talk about health issues? Not providing any reports, any evidence? I mean, that's ridiculous, which shows you, she's not giving you the real reason. The City of Southfield's not giving the real reason. The City of Southfield is not going to work with you. They're not going to help you. You got to go to court. You got to get in front of a judge. You got to present your evidence and let the judge decide whether or not the City of, the City of Southfield has any authority to proceed, because an ordinance is not a law. That's just what the City of Southfield chooses to do. It has to be tested in court. And the only way that happens is you got to get in front of a judge, and you got to present your case. Because otherwise, the City of Southfield is just going to be like, well, you didn't go to court, so we're going to do whatever we want. You got to go to court. If you need help, come get me. I'll go to court with you.
The next person is Ms. Pamela Gerald. Give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Mr. Chairman, due to the fact that my wife, Pamela Gerald, had throat surgery last week, I, Gerard Mullin, will tonight read my wife's words. Here goes. I'd like to thank the following Parks and Recreation Staff members for the wonderful job they did at the 2017 Gazebo Concert Series. Those employees are Dave Duchaine, Catherine, Stephanie, and Gary Brewer. First of all, all of the concerts started on time, which is very important to me and to the audience. Secondly, the selected bands were perfect for this year's concert series. And also, there was a good variety of music. And finally, the bands were very interactive with the crowd. The music was so awesome that we started a tradition of dancing on the paver at the berg. All the bands appreciated the audience's participation and acknowledged the new berg dancers. We have walkers at the pavilion. Now we have dancers at the berg. The Gazebo Concert Series united a very diverse audience, made up of different races and different ages, all united and dancing to the music. At the last concert of the series, we even had an 80-year-old man, a visitor from Germany, who danced continuously for an hour and a half with various women. What was most notable was the German man would come to your seat and ask you to dance, and then walk you back to the chair. A true gentleman. Most of the audience attended all seven concerts, each Tuesday evening at 7:00, from 11 through, from July 11th through to August 22nd, and then attended the senior day on Wednesday, August 23rd. Again, thank you to the P&amp;R staff, Dave Duchaine, Catherine, Stephanie, and Gary Brewer, for their hard work in making this concert series a huge success. And again, thank you. Oh, one last thing. At the end of Evergreen Week last week, the celebration on Evergreen was a big success. Thank you.
The next person is Michael Collins. If you give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Michael Collins, 22322 Maplewood Drive, Southfield, 48033. I also have comments on ordinance 1571 regarding houses with septic systems. The way I read Section 2104 of ordinance 1571, a septic system that passes is permitted. It says it has to be re-inspected every three years. I think it's implied that if it needs maintenance, it's allowed. But the wording is not clear, I don't think. I would request that the wording be made clear that repair and maintenance of a septic tank system which passes is permitted. Thank you.
The next request is for Hiram and Erica Cade. If you give your name and address for the record. You're going to split three minutes.
Yes, we are. Good evening, Mayor and Council President. My name is Erica Cade. I live at 22175 Maplewood Drive, Southfield, 48033. My husband and I, Hiram, we have unique circumstances that Stacy Dick and Walter Meisen touched on. We also live across the street. I'll let my husband talk. We live across the street from the Sherwins, 22220 Maplewood. Their home is a little bit less, closer to the street than our house is. So they, they could, they hooked up, and they hooked up, I don't know how many years ago. But they're our neighbors. They're good friends. But we are more than 200 feet. I'll let you talk.
Good evening. My name is Hiram. I live at 221775 Maplewood Drive. We've got a unique circumstance in that, that our house not only is on a hillside, but our septic system exits to the back of the house. So it, it makes it almost impossible to flow up a hill and around to the front of the house since we're 240 feet away from the city sewer system. We're thinking that 1571 really doesn't apply to us. I mean, it's, it, it applies to us, but it doesn't. In regards that it's too long of a run, we've got to defeat gravity in order to flow sewage uphill to hook to the city sewer system. We just don't see that being doable. I mean, gravity works every time, you know, whether we like it or not. It works every time. We just think that there needs to be a moratorium on 1571 until some kind of positive thought can be made to, for it to fit all, instead of just fitting a few people, fit everybody, you know, especially our situation.
Yeah. Our septic is in the back. And from Section 2.101, it says, "Building sewer shall mean the extension from the building drain to the public sewer or other place of disposal." Our septic is in the back. We have a walkout. We have a bathroom in the basement. We have a well in our front yard. We're on an acre, and we're pushed back from the street. So we're asking for a permit for, to fix our septic tank. And that's all we want, just to fix it. We don't want to hook up to the sewer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm here on behalf of my neighbors in Beechwood Acres. I had an inspection last year, and my property passed. Of course, I'm almost 300 feet from the sewer hookup, but my septic is in the back, my field is in the back of my house, but people asked for a moratorium on 1571. And I agree with that. Now, we have young families out there in Beechwood Acres that might not have the kind of resources that some of us older residents might have. But if we're only going to talk about loan for property to fix it, if we're only going to talk about compliance, that is not the answer for homeowners. I don't have a problem, except I have neighbors that have a problem. I don't have a problem, except I have neighbors that have a problem. And we need time for you to take a look at it and see what can be done. Now, understand, we talk about health problems. I'll tell you, there is grants from the Department of Health for problems that I heard in our last meeting that is happening in that area. And if that's the case, anybody can go online and find out what Department of Health says about that. Nobody's talking about grants. Nobody's talking about helping these residents- residents out here, and that is something that needs to be taken into account. I'm gonna tell you something. I'm a thirty-year Marine retiree, fifteen-year educator here in the state of Michigan, and I'm gonna tell you, I've been places that I've seen the Health Department fix these lines, take care of people that have the kind of problem that my neighbors have now. Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda, uh, before I go to the next item, uh, Mr. Administrator, you've heard the concerns of the people that have come to the microphone. Can you have an answer, uh, thirty days? Can I give you thirty days to come up with a, uh, some kind of an answer that, after you study the situation, to see if there's a- a way to ameliorate the- the problem to the point where, uh, it's acceptable?
We will report back to council within thirty days.
Uh, and please keep in mind that the stakeholders need to have some- some input to the solution. Okay? If you want me to be involved in it, I'm more than happy to be involved in it. Okay? The next item on our agenda is the council portion, and we have an approval for a travel expense for Councilman Ficassi.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve Mr. Ficassi's travel expense to the Henry Ford Museum, Dearborn, Michigan.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Mantlebaum, that we approve the travel expense for Councilman Ficassi. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It is carried. Uh, is there anything else to counsel?
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Ficassi.
To the administrator, uh, near the- the, um, facility that we approved tonight for the children nursery on Twelve Mile Road, just to the east of that, there's a, um, there's a building that is housing smokers-only, uh, V A P E and smoking accessories. And it's got bars on the window. I don't know what's going on in that place, but we do not, I mean, even on the doors, there are, um, I mean, it's, you know, look at that, that. It's just some Twelve Mile Road just, uh-
East of-
Just east of- of Greenfield Road. And we don't have anything like that in the city.
East of Greenpass.
I guess I gotta give you s-
West of- of Greenfield. And we don't have anything like that in the city. And I don't know what they're smoking over there, what they're selling, but it doesn't look good. And there's other ways in which you can, uh, make, uh, places safe. They have, you know, glass windows now that don't break instead of bars. And I think bars should be absolutely eliminated and voted out of the city. It's not- it's not, uh, has a bad cast on that neighborhood. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
I think, uh, a number of years ago, there was a place on Twelve Mile, was just west of, uh, Ponderosa, that was a store that had bars on the windows.
Yeah.
They had the last coin phone in town.
Yeah.
And we took a position that nobody else will be putting bars on their windows on businesses in the city of Southfield. So I don't know where that went, but, uh-
Well, there's glass that is unbreakable.
Yeah.
That you can put in, and there's no way a car can't even go through it.
Right. I don't know if we have a log or an ordinance against that or not. Mr. Brightwell.
Mr. Chair, I wanna bring up something I brought up. I think it was May, April or May of, uh, two thousand sixteen, and it deals with Comcast Internet Essential. The reason it's coming back up now is that Comcast just recently announced on August twenty-two of this year, uh, that they were giving Internet Essentials to the city of Detroit. And this is the same program that we- that they're offering here. And approximately forty-nine thousand individuals in the state of Michigan utilize this program. The program is for income, low-income households with school-aged children and adults who receive federal housing and urban development assistance. And they are extending this particular program to the city of Detroit extensively, but it's already here in Southfield. You can get Internet for nine ninety-five a month if you're eligible. And also, you might be eligible to purchase a- a Internet-ready computer for one-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And they are suggesting that you call their number and then you would p- you would be, uh, interviewed to determine whether or not you are eligible. The number is eight-five-five-eight-four-six-eight-three-seven-six. This is the same Internet Essential program I spoke about in April or May of nineteen sixteen. And obviously, nationwide, people are actually using this. So if you are, if you think you're eligible or whether or not you just wanna determine whether or not you're eligible, eligible, you know, please dial that number, eight-five-five-eight-four-six-eight-three-seven-six. And one other item that I wanna mention is that last month, I mentioned I will be bringing this up, um, until, uh, the date. It's a veteran's stand-down. It'd be October five, October four through five of twenty-seventeen. It will be held in Detroit, thirty-six oh-six, East Forest Avenue, Detroit four-eight-two-oh-six. I did announce this, uh, at our last televised session. At that time, I did- I did not have a number, telephone number, but here's a telephone And also, a lady, a young lady at the VA downtown, her number is three-one-three-five-seven-six-three-eight-seven-oh. That is Ms. Linda Johnson at the VA. Uh, the veteran's stand-down is, for those particular days, they will be assisting veterans who are in need of, um, services. And a military's stand-down is pretty much, uh, when the military actually stops all action and take, you know, take kind of like a house cleaning, uh, issues and deal with, uh, the soldier, sailor, marine needs. So those are the two announcements. They're ver- fairly significant, and that, as I mentioned before, I will be bringing this again about the veteran's stand-down until October. It is October four through five, uh, of this year. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mantlebaum?
Yes, thank you. Uh, today was the first day of school for many people, and I just want to remind everyone that children will be walking, biking, or even taking the bus to school, so please be cautious when you see the bus sign up. I've already received a complaint from someone who has a special needs child, and their people were just driving right past the bus with their red lights on and the bar down, so please be cautious when you, uh, see the school bus and especially around, um, school facilities. I also, um, there was a nice article in the Southfield Sun this past, uh, week about the Southfield Human Services pop-in-to-meet, uh, this Wednesday from three to seven at the library. Um, you can learn about the many different programs that Southfield Human Services has to offer, including chore and world medical relief, and of course, you get, um, some free popcorn. So that's Wednesday from three to seven at the library in the meeting room. Um, also, a new activity that we have coming up is a senior dance and soiree being done by the Total Living Commission, the Commission on Senior Adults and Parks and Recreation. Uh, they are having on Thursday, September fourteenth, from seven-thirty to nine-thirty, a senior dance and soiree. And for more information, um, you can contact Human Services, two-four-eight-seven-nine-six-four-five-four-zero, and to pre-purchase tickets at a lower cost. Also, something that has not been done in recent history, um, with our Parks and Rec Department is the Southfield Pool will be open over the Labor Day weekend from two, from September second through the fourth, twelve-thirty to six P M. each day. Usually, they close when school starts, but they're leaving it open over the weekend, um, so hopefully, everyone can take, um, advantage of that, and the weather will cooperate. Lastly, I'd like to, one of the speakers earlier this evening made reference to council procedure, um, as- as it related to a vote to make a charter amendment to the, uh, on the ballot, and I'd like to ask our city attorney if she can clarify, um, how that vote worked and whether or not, and I believe, uh, the city did follow proper protocol.
Well, in order to place a, uh, a charter amendment on the ballot, there is a three-fifth vote of the members-elect of council. It's not how many are there at a particular night. It is the members-elect would be how many are in office. So three-fifths of seven is four-point-two, which would be five members would have to vote. And I- I don't recall the specifics that night, but we would've needed five votes in favor of putting it on- on the ballot.
So if two members voted no, and the rest of the four members voted yes, it still would not count because it wasn't enough.
Because there was not a seventh member there that night, so you couldn't have gotten to five that night.
Was that fifth-grade math?
Uh, I don't know.
All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Maybe fourth grade, I don't know.
I would, I would, you know, actually, if I remember correctly, actually, I do believe we had three no votes, 'cause I believe, Don, you voted against it as well, about the charter.
You know, I- I do recollect that. Yes, he did. Yes, there were three votes, right.
I think we were-
When it halted.
Anyone else? Is there anyone else? Okay, the next item, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, just very briefly, um, I wanna comment on the, uh, grand opening we had last week for the Southfield Career Center. Uh, we are, um, our career center is the first of its kind in Michigan to be located on a college campus. It's in the Marx Building on the north end of, uh, Lawrence Tech. And it's a beautiful new facility, um, that, uh, is much more collaborative for- for the staff. Uh, this is a partnership with Oakland County, um, the Michigan Works Grant, and, uh, Lawrence Tech and the city of Southfield. Uh, again, it's on Civic Center Drive on the north end of, um, our, uh, our Lawrence Tech campus, and, um, very well-attended, um, and, uh, great resources there for people looking for, uh, work or retraining, um, uh, in various, uh, career fields. That's all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you. Administration?
I have no items.
Attorney?
Nothing, Mr. President.
We have, uh, changing the council's starting time for September the eleventh. Uh, before us, I need-
I'm pulled, Mr. Chairman.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Ficassi, supported by Mr. Mantlebaum, that we change the council meeting start time for September the eleventh, two thousand seventeen, to five-thirty so that, uh, we can do the-
Community pride.
Community pride. Is there any discussion?
I thought it was for my birthday party.
Um, if I- if I could correct, we're- we're changing the starting time from six o'clock to six-thirty.
I'm sorry.
You said five-thirty.
I'm sorry.
Well, it's to accommodate community pride, which starts at five-thirty, and we need, um, probably about an hour to present the awards, so we're just gonna move our, um, committee of the whole meeting to six-thirty.
I moved the wrong-
It's okay.
Wrong thing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed is carried.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I think the treasurer wishes to be recognized.
Oh, Mr. Treasurer?
I just wanted-
Did I miss you?
I just wanted to remind the, uh, the viewing audience that this is the last week to pay property taxes on their Southfield properties. Uh, deadline is August thirty-first, and we accept postmarks, so, uh, we also have a twenty-four-hour drop box outside City Hall, so that's available for residents, and we also have online payments available. We also offer deferments for people who can qualify for that. If the household income is below forty thousand dollars and, uh, people are either veterans or age sixty-two years of age or older, and household income is below forty thousand dollars, they can qualify for a deferment, which allows them to extend the time to pay taxes till, uh, the end of February, uh, with us. So definitely, I encourage people to take advantage of that. Uh, the deadline to apply for the deferment is actually September fourteenth. So, uh, if anyone is able to or knows anyone that can qualify for it, please have them come in, and, uh, we can provide them that extension they need to provide, a copy of their homestead. It's gotta be for primary homestead, uh, homestead properties, um, and proof of income and proof of residency, so.
Is there an interest charge on that deferment?
No, there's no interest charge on that. Uh, we allow them to make partial payments, and so this way, it makes it more affordable for people as, um, and- and able to handle that law, um, the tax bill that potentially can be an overwhelming burden for some of the, uh, some of our seniors and disabled, uh, individuals.
Mr. Chairman, wasn't there something to the treasurer? Isn't there something that veterans' property taxes are waived now?
Yeah, so there is, for a hundred percent disability, it's gotta be, uh, there's gotta be proof of a hundred percent disability and, uh, handled through the assessing department, uh, that they will waive the, uh, property taxes in those situations, and that is something that the assessing department handles, and, uh, that also is something that they need to apply for. Um, well, uh, it's actually, the deadline for that is usually earlier than now.
I thought the veterans got a break.
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, the veterans also qualify for the deferment program as well, so that's, in addition to the sixty-two years of age, um, the veterans and disableds are able to, uh, participate in the deferment program.
Okay, thank you. Uh, there is one thing that, uh, slipped my mind, um, and that is, it was on the news that your driver's license, the current driver's license you have, is no longer going to be acceptable if you're going to fly, uh, domestic or, uh, entrance into a government building. So you have to go to the, uh, the clerk's office and, uh, and the Secretary of State's office, excuse me, Secretary of State's office, and get an upgraded license. Uh, doesn't cost anymore, but it's gonna have something special on it that will allow you to get on a plane for domestic flights and get into government buildings. So it started, it started, they started, uh, providing them, uh, this Monday, today, and I think it takes effect in another month or two. It's not right away, but, uh, okay?
It starts twenty, October first, twenty-twenty.
Right.
You'll need to have this I D., but they started rolling it out currently.
All right. Thank you for computers. Uh, is there any other business to come before the council? Seeing no other business, meeting is adjourned.